Well, they're resolving an issue so that we can hear one of the zoning board members. I'm going to do a call to order. So, um, welcome everyone to the zoning board of adjustment meeting for December 21st. It is 7:05 PM. Our apologies for starting late. We're going to start out with a pledge of allegiance. Those of you who would like to participate, please do. Now, we're going to, um, move to a quick discussion on continuance, which may clear some of you from the room at this time. If the board should choose to hear that continuance. So, I'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is in its own nation under God.
Thank you.
Vanessa, can you hear me now?
I'm going to ask, I know you can hear me, we can't hear you yet. So, I'm going to ask that your roll call vote be in nod of your head. Present remotely is Paul Tibode. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here. And Tracy Hardikoff here. I'd like to ask the zoning board at this time for two things. I'd like to move the agenda with your permission. Um, I'd like to move meeting minutes up, um, right after the pledge of allegiance and then a continuance request. Do I have a motion, um?
So moved.
And a second, okay. And all those in favor of changing that portion of the agenda? Paul, did you hear that? Could you nod yes if you're in it? Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. American sign language, we're coming up right at this moment. Um, so the first thing is review of the meeting minutes. Uh, I've reviewed them. I did not find them to be anything but complete. I found no spelling errors. I would make a motion to accept those meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Cheryl Hopkins. Thank you so much. All those in favor, Paul, I'll take a nod of your head, yes? If you agree to accept the meeting minutes? Oh, yes, sir, thank you.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting minutes are accepted since the prior month's, uh, actually, it's two months ago, this meeting. The next thing before us is a request for. Got to get this right. For 240-8GR-22-3 variance and special exception. This is in reference to the Young Road applicant. They have asked for a continuance. Um, I know that our zoning board member has asked to accuse himself for many and all things regarding a vote on this. So, do I have a motion for a continuance to January on that case?
I'll make a motion.
And do I have a second? Andre is the second. Thank you. All those in favor of continuing that case to the January 19th meeting? Have I got the correct date?
Um, Jen, I'm going to say eight.
The 18th, January 18th meeting. So, do I have a motion to move that continuance without additional fees for that applicant?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of continuing that to January?
Yes.
Yes.
Bailey, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. Thank you so much, folks. Okay. So, if anyone is here to hear the Young Road case, we have moved it to the month of January. Okay. We did notice online that this was going to be a potential write show vote. So, my apologies every once in a while.
Hey, Paul, if you can hear me, can you unmute yourself and see if we can hear you now?
I can hear you, can you hear me now? I can hear you.
Okay, see how unmuted? Just give me one second, I'll check it out right now.
Okay, so, moving on, folks. I'm going to ask that everyone, do me the favor, place your phones either on vibrate or silent so that you do not interrupt any portion of the meeting. Thank you. Okay.
All right, try that box.
Done?
Test.
Test.
We, oh, excellent. We hear you, sir.
You hear me.
Yeah. Very good, thank you. We're, we're about to start the first, um. Yep, very good, thank you. We had a roll call vote, you signify by nodding your head. We feel comfortable with that, thank you. Our first public hearing is in reference to 244-1GR-22, a variance. The owners are Fixed Homes LLC. It is a request by the applicant for variance from Article 4, Section 4.1.1, Table 2, Dimensional Standards, who allows frontage on 33.6 feet where 40 feet is required at 65 Corbett Road on a two-acre lot in the general residential zoning district. After?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll have to recuse myself from this, uh, application.
Excellent. Um, that, um, I'm going to pause for a quick minute. Would the board entertain me describing what our job is as a zoning board of adjustments? Okay, thank you. Uh, and Hardikoff, aye. I'm very comfortable with that as well.
I'm always open to learning something.
Excellent. So, we've all taken training, um, to sit on this ZBA as a land use board. And I wanted to just bring up the fact, we are a quasi judicial board. And that is, um, by appointment of the select court. And our job is to listen to special exceptions to zoning ordinances that everyone in the town votes on and to listen to variances, relax, relaxation of some rules or waivers that are provided to people where they own a piece of property that they would like to be able to use. But in its current condition or state, there are zoning ordinances in place that would not allow them to use the property. That is why we exist. There were a few things posted online. I want to just be very clear with people. Because someone sits on the ZBA does not mean that they cannot apply for either special exception, variance, or administrative appeal. They have the right to do that as a resident of the town of Barrington. We do, however, take an oath before we sit in front of you. And we hold that oath very tight in that we will function ethically with every case that we hear before us. So, I would just ask, from a public perspective, our job is not to stop growth in the town of Barrington. Our job is not to do a favor for a friend. That is not what we're here for. We're here to still represent the best interest of all of the town of Barrington, but as a quasi judicial board, to hear those special exceptions that are needed and any variances that need to be put forth or appeals for administrative decision that need to be overturned in order for someone to appropriately use a piece of land. So, I, I brought that forward because, um, I personally read online quite a few comments questioning how the board could function with ethics and still hear a case from someone that might sit on the board. I feel very comfortable that we can do that. Um, do the rest of you feel comfortable with that as well? Absolutely.
I do.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so, with this particular request for 244-1-GR-22, the variance for owners fixed homes, a couple of things I need to bring forward. Our legal department indicated you are actually asking for a change to the front setback. Have I got that right? Yes.
That's what they needed.
Yeah.
But the request and the notice that went out was for frontage, which is different than a front setback.
So, if you choose to have the board hear this, just understand that the notice reads one thing. Should someone appeal our decision, we will have to rehear your case in January. Or you can wait until January. I have to leave that up to you to decide.
I've discussed that with my client and we are prepared to move forward.
Okay.
Although I, I don't necessarily know it would be an automatic reversal, but we could, that would be a conversation for a different day.
I'm, I'm letting you know how legal has guided us. We're letting you make the decision.
Sure.
You're comfortable proceeding.
We're comfortable proceeding.
Very good, okay. So, in the public hearing, we hear the case for it. And then anyone who would like to speak against it? Please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Brett Allard with Sean C. Raish. I am legal counsel for the applicant, uh, in this matter. Uh, Fixed Homes LLC is the property owner. And joined with me to my right is the principal of that LLC, Luke Stillwagon. Uh, this is 65 Corbett Road, Tax Parcel 2241, in the general residential district. Uh, the property is approximately two acres and has 300 feet or so of frontage on Corbett Road. Um, I do have, um, extra copies of the foundation certificate in case anyone needs them, but I think they were included in your.
They were, yeah.
Okay. Um, this site is, uh, is serviced by a private well in Septic. Um, it does have some pretty steep slopes in the front as well as in the back of the lot. There was some photos attached to the application. I believe the board has those in its package as well, um, which show the sort of steep slope in the front, uh, of the lot, in that front yard setback, um, in between the road slash right of way, um, and, and the home. Um, it also has sort of a steep slope in the back as well, which is, is not quite as relevant to what we're going to be discussing tonight. Um, so the site does sit substantially above grade from the road, uh, if you, if you look at it, uh, from that perspective. There's a narrow sort of wetland channel that bisects the property. So, we have dry upland in the front by Corbett Road and we have dry upland in the back. But you do see on the plan that there is that section of wetlands that sort of cuts the property in half. Um, if you look at the wetland setback, which is 50 feet, uh, combined with the 30-foot side setback and 40-foot front yard setback, you get an extraordinarily small building envelope, uh, which is essentially that little triangle of a better geographic geometric shape, uh, in the northeast corner of the lots. Um, my client bought this property in January of this year. Uh, the property historically maintained a, um, sort of dilapidated manufactured home, which is shown on that plan. Um, that manufactured home, as you see on the plan, was almost entirely within the 50 foot, excuse me, 50-foot, uh, wetland setback. Um, and it was 22.9, 22, 29.2 feet from the edge of the wetland at its closest point, uh, on that southwest corner. Uh, since my client purchased the property, uh, that manufactured home has been removed. Actually, it was removed by the prior owner. Um, my client obtained a building permit to build a new single-family home in the location that you see on the plan. Um, and the intended location of the home was entirely within that, uh, very small, uh, but, but still adequate for purposes of the size of the home building envelope. Um, so it was intended to go entirely within that building envelope. The setbacks were measured, uh, by a surveyor that my client retained back in the spring of this year. Um, and stakes were placed by the surveyor at that time on the corners of the proposed, uh, new home.
Surveyor's name, please?
Brett Jewell.
Thank you very much.
Um, the surveyor was scheduled to return in June. There was a delay. Uh, my client ended up engaging a different surveyor to come out and complete the field certif, uh, foundation certificate that we have submitted. That was done by Eric Salavich at Northam Survey. Um, and at that time, uh, it was discovered that the, uh, field certificate plan showed that the building wasn't placed in precisely the correct location. Um, the intended foundation had shifted about six and a half feet in between the time when the stakes were placed, marking the corners of the new home and when the foundation footings were poured. Um, and essentially what we think happened is the stakes were removed by the original excavator when he was digging the hole to build the foundation. And, uh, then the hole got dug and there was a misfire by 16. Uh, that issue was discovered in October, um, of this year. It was an honest mistake, uh, certainly nothing intentional or nefarious. Um, and we actually had a good conversation, uh, recently with my client talking about, you know, I think next time what we could do is double stake it. So, you have your stakes that mark the corners and then do maybe 20 feet from each stake so that if the initial stakes have to be removed, you still have sort of tie lines, if that's the right surveying. Um, where you can measure and put those stakes back in so you can sort of double check along the way. Uh, but be that as it may, we are here where we are today. The foundation has been poured and the house has been built. Um, and so as soon as we, uh, received the, uh, foundation certificate, uh, my client immediately contacted the town to say, hey, you know, this is a problem. I just discovered it. What can we do to resolve it? Uh, and here we are. Um, so we are requesting a variance from, um, Article 4.1.1, Table 2, to allow the new dwelling to remain 33.6 feet from the front lot line, uh, where the ordinance does require a 40-foot front yard setback. So, without further ado, the five variance criteria. Um, granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Uh, for a variance, variance to be contrary to the public interest, the proposal has to unduly in a marked degree conflict with the ordinance so much that it violates basic zoning objectives. Uh, and the relevant tests are whether the proposal will alter the character of the area or threaten public health and welfare, safety. We don't see any alteration to the essential character of the area. If the variance is granted, uh, this property will remain consistent with the single-family nature of the, um, the neighborhood. Um, and in fact, several other properties in the area do have structures which currently approach into the front yard setback. Just two of them that I could find based on the town's BIS system are 38 Corbett Road. It has a structure 28 feet from the front lot line. 71 Corbett Road has two structures. I think one's a garage and one's a home. But one's six feet from the front lot line, uh, and one's 23 feet. Those are probably grandfathered structures if I had to guess, but consistent with the character of the area nonetheless. Uh, we don't think there's any threat to the public health or safety. Uh, we'll still have 33.6 feet between the home and the front lot line. Uh, and that's just to the edge of the right of way. It's actually an additional 20 feet to the edge of pavement. So, if we're talking structure to pavement, we have about 53 feet. Um, again, the site is substantially above grade from the road. Uh, so that slope that you see in those photos, uh, and if you're driven by the site, really forms a sort of natural, uh, sloping buffer in between the buildable upland and the road. So, we're not going to have a situation where there's any danger to motorists or any interference with snow climbing and road maintenance or anything like that. Number two, granting the variance will be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Uh, the spirit of front yard setbacks is really to minimize overcrowding, congested development, uh, and provide a buffer between structures and motorists traveling on the roadway and ensure, uh, sufficient area for snow removal and road maintenance, as I suggested. As I just said, we don't see any of those as issues here. Uh, we don't think there'll be any overcrowding. We have enough upland to support the dwelling, uh, even with the 6.5-foot misfire, so to speak. Um, the new home is almost entirely within the building envelope and even more so than the, um, prior, uh, mobile home, uh, at least relative to that wetland setback. So, we think the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice. Uh, the courts held that perhaps the only guiding rule is that any loss to the applicant that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. Uh, and I think that's the most really critical criteria here for this type of application. I don't say that for every application, but I think it's the most important one here. Um, because the ZBA can grant a variance to pardon sort of an honest mistake like this when it happens. Uh, it doesn't set precedent. You know, the board can still analyze future situations on a case-by-case basis. But here, there was nothing intentional. There was nothing nefarious. Um, I'm sure my client wishes it didn't happen and he wasn't the one who wants to sit here tonight. Um, certainly not gaining anything, uh, by, that he would have otherwise had with this property had it been built in the right location. It's not a situation where it's, you know, oh, let's accidentally build it further to the front and then we can build something else in the back. It's not, the house is there, it's the same house that was going to be there regardless. Uh, it was just an honest mistake that happened, um, which is now costing time and money to resolve. And we're hopeful we can resolve, resolve it tonight. But, um, that is to say that there's no injury to the public if the variance is granted. There's really only harm to my client if the variance is denied. Um, in terms of extraordinary costs, if he had to tear down the house and move the foundation six and a half feet. We actually talked about what the cost would be and it would be to the tune of $450,000 based on current investment and, um, additional money that would have to be spent to accomplish that sort of thing, uh, for six and a half feet. Uh, so we think for those reasons, substantial justice would certainly be done, uh, by granting the variance. And this, you know, the house is appropriate for the area. Uh, it's consistent with the present use of the area. We think, uh, when you weigh the public and private rights, substantial justice really is, uh, in the way of granting this variance. Number four, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. Um, the proposal's in harmony with the neighborhood. Uh, this proposed use, single-family residential, which is permitted by right in the neighborhood and the zone, uh, doesn't, it's presumed that reasonable permitted uses don't devalue surrounding property values. Uh, this property is being revitalized based on what was there before and what's being, you know, putting there now. Uh, we're not seeking to build within any side setbacks closer to neighbors than is otherwise allowed. So, uh, we do think that, uh, granting a variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties. And last but not least, unnecessary hardship. I know the board knows the standards, so I won't read it. But suffice to say, so, special conditions is the first part of the analysis. Uh, and we think we have several special conditions here that distinguish this property from others in the area. First is that wetland. Uh, that really is what creates the sort of pinch in the corner there. Uh, the second is those steep slopes in the front, the steep slopes in the back. And then when you combine the wetland setback, the side setback and the front yard setback, again, you get that extraordinarily small building envelope in combination with the fact that this site does sit well above grade, uh, from the, the roadway. So, owing to all those special conditions, we don't believe there's a fair and substantial relationship between the purpose and application of the front yard setback, uh, requirement here. Um, again, the primary purpose is to minimize overcrowding and congested development and make sure you're not going to have any dangers in terms of building too close to the road. No overcrowding, we got sufficient upland. The new home is almost entirely within the building envelope. No plowing, road maintenance issues because, again, that slope and the significant distance, uh, in the substantial grade. Uh, so really the purpose and the harms that the zoning ordinance seeks to protect or, or prevent are not threatened here if the variance is granted. So, for all of those reasons and because it is, again, a permitted by right use, we believe the proposed use is reasonable, uh, and we'd ask that, uh, the, uh, board grant the variance. Be happy to answer any questions.
I'll just make an observation. I, I did approach the land use department to ask, had there ever been another building by this particular builder that was placed in the wrong, um, location at the time the foundation was poured? And the answer we received was no. So, thank you, um, for that. Any other questions? Yes, no, I'm sorry. Any other questions? Paul, you're online, do you have any other questions?
Recused himself from.
Oh, Paul recused himself, thank you very much. Uh, seeing as that portion of those speaking for, um, has been completed, is there anyone who'd like to speak against this application? I'm not sure. Uh, did you have any questions on that?
No.
No, okay. So, anyone who would like to speak against this particular application?
Here, if anybody would like to have.
For the variance.
If there's anybody online, if you could raise your hand, um, so that way we know that you would like to speak for against this, um, and then you can unmute yourself.
Can you raise your hand by mousing over your screen and it will pull up? Nice little hand. You can click on that and we'll hear you and recognize you if you're there to speak against this application.
And star six can unmute yourself.
If you're on the phone.
If you're on the phone.
I don't see anybody, no reaction. Okay. Um, seeing as we've heard all testimony, um, in reference to this application, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we grant this variance. Uh, my reasoning is, I believe this was an honest mistake in six and a half feet. I think we'd be unreasonable to expect him to rip up his house and his funding for number six and a half, nine. I make a, I make a motion that we grant this.
Second that, I'll second that for the same reasons. I feel that, uh, just a human error.
Okay. Um, could I have a roll call vote, please, beginning with Mr.?
Yeah.
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
Thank you very much.
Paul, can I also put in a note that's? Right setback.
Yes. Yes. I think, I think we opened the meeting with enough detail. I'm not that pleased. Yeah. Legal, that's why I'm in. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, everybody, night.
Next before us is 251-9JASGR-22, an application for special exception. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Tyler and Katie Brinkwith. Okay. Mr. Rand, before you begin, I'm not even going to have you place that because, um, I think after speaking with our legal department, that you're going to need to withdraw the special exception application and apply the variance for mixed use.
Okay.
And if we were to proceed, we would run into the same situation that we just proposed, but I think with a much more, maybe, um, passionate group of people speaking in reference to it. So, I would give you the word that our legal department has recommended that you withdraw the special exception application and apply for a variance for mixed use.
Could you say that again, please?
Sure. Our legal department has recommended that you withdraw your application for a special exception and apply for a variance for mixed use.
I have with me, uh, five applications for a variance for mixed use that we hear now.
Okay. We have to legally notice the public when we are hearing any of the cases. We would not be charging you to refile. It would be at no cost. But our legal department has recommended that course of action so that we are appropriately addressing your case.
Okay. Is there anything you should, can say now or you want to hear now? May I answer any questions?
So, um, our recommendations were that you withdraw and reapply under the variance for the mixed use.
Okay.
Wish I had a different answer for you. I know that you did a lot practice.
Okay.
Anything we would decide tonight would be appealable almost instantly. Okay. Okay.
Hey, we have it from you verbally, sir. If that is your wish.
I wish to apply correctly for what I need to.
Variance. Yes.
And if it's a variance, that's what I desire. If it's a, I guess I'm at the point where I'm not even sure if it's supposed to be a variance or a special condition. I think in this case, it has been a special condition in the past.
Mm-hmm.
And so, are, in my hearing accurately, that 100% this needs to be a variance?
Yes, that is what our legal representative for the town of Barrington has advised us. Am I stating that correctly?
So, um, when the applicant came in for, um, to apply for mixed use, to apply for advisement, it was a special exception for mixed use of the property. But a variance is more appropriate for his.
For the full application of this. Um, no, this is completely up to the applicant.
And, um, and then per our, like, definitely, um, definition, that's what we have. I'm looking. Thoughts with the junior official originally about like why it's a special, that's a number of reasons.
Okay, good night. Is what we based it on. The definition that's in our zone.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. He talks about use.
Yes.
And he was asking for a use, uh, setback. And he stopped at that, initially looked at those issues as being variance and a use would be a special exception because how this is ready to go. I know it's actually what the, this totally.
That's why we're trying to let it out. We, we take the responsibility for kind of giving him the wrong direction based on our definition.
So, any of the refile and fees and the notice to the owners for next month where Mrs. required to be waived? Could I have a motion to waive all fees? Present my, like, second and a second. And could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Bailey, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. Mr. Tibode?
Aye.
Thank you. So, all fees would be prefiled in a more appropriate manner and all fees would be waived.
Okay. Thank you, so there's no, no question, it's going to be a variance.
It's going to be a variance. That is, this is what our legal department tells us, that is how we proceed, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any, any questions for me before I go?
I know. Um, if you resumé it as a variance, because you heard January 18th, we'll do that change.
Okay.
So, I mean, I can link your application number to it.
I will make sure that it's accurate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, public hearing. The application 239-7-PC-222, a variance. Owner's town-centered property, request by the applicant for a variance to Article 19, Table 1. to Article nineteen, Table one, Table of uses, footnote fifteen, who allow for a total of sixty-two bedrooms, where twenty-nine are permitted, request for a variance from Article sixteen, section sixteen point two point two, parentheses two, and sixteen point three point two, parentheses three, and from Article nineteen, Table one, Table of uses, footnote six, who allow for a total of thirty-two units, where seven are permitted on the Hill Highway, Malibu Road, on twelve point zero five acres in the town center zoning district, presented by a Francis, am I pronouncing this right, Bruton?
Right.
Okay.
Just, just before we get started, if you could take that, sort it over by the podium. You've been having some people that can see it, plus it would be seen by the public. Yeah, the people can see it, but the cameras don't pick it up.
Where do you want them?
If they don't, because they can angle it.
If we have copies of this.
So that way, the people on the camera can see what they're pointing to, they point to, and the people in the audience can too.
Can't tell you how to present your case, but I will say you're asking for four variances. So going one by one, I think would be the most appropriate way for us to digest all of the information. Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, I want to introduce myself. I'm Dan Gabriel. I'm fifty percent owner of Town Center Properties, and my partner Bud Meter is here with us today. And we have, we've known each other for a long time, and we bought this property in two thousand and fifteen. And I wanted to, I know that my lawyer gets very nervous for me to say something, especially without any script. But I, it was important for me to share with you my passion for this project because since day one, it was important to me to do something for the elderly, for the town of Barrington. My parents are both deceased, and when they needed assistance, there was no room at the end. And what we're experiencing everywhere right now is that either staffing issues or capacity issues, many of the nursing homes and the care for the elderly is closed for anybody new, and it's causing a lot of burdens on families. So to just give a brief history, in two thousand and seven, the town spent a lot of money on a vision plan, and we have a copy of this vision plan here. I don't know if everyone can see it, but you say you have a copy, so I'll go this way with it. We were familiar with this plan and familiar with the town process, and we believe that our presentation conforms every aspect of this plan. And what we're asking for tonight is a density on the elderly because there is a disconnect between this plan and how the rules and density calculations have changed over the last couple of years. And I think FX will point out what those differences are. But back in two thousand and seven or thereabouts, this plan was created, and what it showed was a town center, and that's when the zoning was changed. And I think there's also four, George Hill property, as well as the Knights property, as well as all the surrounding, even across the street where Irving is. So it's quite a large tract. On this plan, there were one, two, three, four, five, six senior housing, very large buildings being proposed, or at least in concept. One of the buildings, which would be right next to the post office, was about four times the size of the post office. So this was the vision for the town. This is what a lot of the town business people that were on it, I think George was on it, I, maybe Greg or one of the Bolton's were on it, but I know that there were at least a dozen people that were involved in a hearing committee about what the town wants of this area. And it included a town green or a common area. It included, in this case, a ball field or recreation for, for the public. And I think there's a library written in right here. And, and this was the, this was the directive we had when we went to the town and said, and I met with the planning department and said, what do we, what do we do with this piece of property? And they said, please try to stick to the plan. So about that time, two thousand and seven, there was a company, I think their name was Tropic Star Development, and they had proposed and went to the planning board with about six very large commercial retail buildings. When I mean large, they were like six JCPenney's. In the middle was a large grocery store, and parking was all along the strip of where the Knights are now. And, and that would have probably had a thousand cars a day. It was a very, very large project. Then the recession hit in two thousand and eight, project never got built. The developer never purchased it from, from Mrs. Caleb at the time. And then a number of years went by. And in two thousand and fifteen, actually almost to the day, I think it was sometime around the middle of December of two thousand and fifteen, I sat with Mrs. Caleb in her kitchen with other family members and asked, you know, what are your thoughts? And she says, I really hope and my, my wish is, is that something be provided for the Barrington residents so that the elderly can stay here, that they can live here, they don't have to move and go to another community. And I said, well, I'll make sure we incorporate that. So over the past seven years, I've been approached by one with a brewery, that's an acceptable use in this zone, and I said, no. Another was a, a large restaurant that actually had a nightclub attached to it, which could be approved in this zone. And I said, no, because I really wanted to do this elderly project. So over the last twelve months, I've been meeting with the planning department and the town zoning administrator, and I believe we've come up with a plan that makes sense. I know that on social media, there've been a lot of, a lot of writings about this. I'm not on social media, but people have sent me some of these posts. First, I want to clarify, it says a major developer is coming to Barrington. I'm not a major developer. I've been retired for a number of years. The only property that Mr. Meter and I own together is this property, and we don't have any projects going on. I haven't had employees for fifteen years. So not a major developer. I am a person that's lived in Stratford County all my life, and I believe that is a real need, and, and now is the time. And if you're going to ever have anything for the elderly, I think this is the place for it. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to FX, and I believe we have a professional person that specializes in geriatric care, and is also going to make a presentation.
Thank you, Dan, and members of the board and Madam Chair. My name is FX Bruton. It says Francis X Bruton, but I do go by FX, so you might hear that name. I'm a attorney with Bruton and Barby in Dover, and I'm happy to be here and happy to be involved in this project. A little bit of background, we, we did look at the schematic design that was developed in two thousand and seven, and when you compare that to what we're proposing, you see a tremendous amount of similarities. Dan mentioned the senior housing that was on that plan. There's actually seven buildings of that that are depicted. Ballfield, Town Green, as part of this project, being a PUP or planning unit development, we would be working with the town to provide for a rather large area where the town's use says they might see fit. And I think there's a lot of interest and support and excitement by the town with respect to that possibility. The, the plan that we have, if you kind of did a flip of the two, you'd see pretty much it's a very similar project. The, the senior housing that's typically, is not limited in a sense. What we came up with was a plan that incorporated the senior housing concept vis a vis first, an assisted living facility, which you see on the current plan, and then a independent living, we call it. But that is, is a fifty-five and older place. What's interesting, and Mr. John Huckins, excuse me, yeah, that's John Huckins. John Hopkins is here, and he is very well-known for owning and running Bellamy Fields and Watson Fields, and he'll be speaking to you briefly tonight, just to kind of give you his perspective on how these things operate. If there's opposition, which you might hear tonight, some of it might be related to traffic. He's going to talk about how, even though we have presented a plan that meets the required parking in terms of what would units require for parking, we're going to talk about putting that into a little bit of context in terms of what happens at a assisted living facility, and that is, in a sense, with respect to parking, virtually almost ten percent of what is required is what is used. And he'll speak to that in, in some terms, but where we show the biggest building, we show a hundred and twenty-four spaces of parking for the assisted living facility, we're going to probably use ten to twelve. So that's one of those elements that I think you'll understand from Mr. Hopkins, that that is the case. Often, when I go before planning boards or zoning boards, I talk about what I think might happen, and I think this board tries to understand what might happen. He's going to talk about this in terms of real terms and what really does happen. So I think that's helpful to you, so that you will have a real account of how this facility would work and kind of, again, keep that in context. What we also provided, again, was the fifty-five and older housing, and part of what we expect to happen, and I think what Mr. Hopkins will also confirm, is that oftentimes couples, people in Barrington who either want to downsize, find that unfortunately, one spouse might require a higher level of care, that being the assisted living care, where the other spouse wants to be next to that person. What a great opportunity for someone who can be in the independent care next to their spouse who is being treated in the assisted living care. Those kinds of things dovetail very well together, and that's why these buildings are situated the way they are. We're looking to create a significant amount of services, obviously, on the assisted care. Those services can be broadened so that those people who are in the fifty-five and older can take advantage of those, whether they're nutritional training, meals, other kinds of therapeutic care, things that will help them as well. So again, this seems to be a very integrated project on purpose. In addition, we have, as you know, a medical office suggested, as well as a daycare. We expect about ten employees to be rotating on shifts at the assisted living facility. Those people are obviously potential customers, if you will, of the daycare, so that, again, diminishes the parking or the traffic that might be going in and out with that kind of use. And obviously, a medical office to provide the services that certainly will be necessary for those in the assisted living. Really creates quite a, quite a great mix in terms of how this can operate in an integrated way and how it fits right in with what the, what the general intent was with respect to the, to the town center concept in the beginning. Again, other, other properties are in that area and are zoned for other uses that, that is also anticipated by the town center concept, and, and those businesses will support and be supported by this development. So we're, we're, we're looking, I think, at what really was the intent, and what we're doing is we're kind of breathing life to it, and we hope that you would agree that that's the case. As a result of how the zoning restrictions are drafted, they were drafted vis a vis either what the characteristic of the use is and not really zone-specific, if you will. We think this is a unique parcel. It's roughly thirteen acres. It's one of the largest parcels that's undeveloped in the town center. And what we found in kind of parsing through these regulations, which were difficult at, at best to say, is that we were limited with respect to the sizes. So if you read my materials, you may not pick up that there's one kind of critical element to the distinction between the two buildings, which is that the, the nursing facility and/or the assisted living facility, which is with respect to our first variance request, is, is a variance that relates to bedrooms, not units. So when we talk about the numbers for that facility, we're talking about bedrooms. There could be two bedrooms in one unit. We're not talking about units. So that's a different distinction than.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt you? When you're saying sixty-two bedrooms, there could be two beds in each of, you said bedrooms. There could be two beds in each of the bedrooms. Is that what you're indicating now?
No, what, what I'm saying is that these are bedrooms and not the, the metric of units. When we talk about the fifty-five and older, then those restrictions relate to number of units. So I just wanted to clarify that, make sure.
One is dwelling units, the other one is bedrooms.
Yeah.
Oh, I understand that, but when you say sixty-two bedrooms, you could potentially have a hundred and twenty-four clients, correct?
That's not our. That's not our intent.
Our intention is, is one person per unit.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
One person per bed.
Per bed.
Okay.
Per bed.
That's right.
Yeah.
Good.
So again, what I highlighted in my footnote to my materials is that there seems to only be a distinction whether you're calling yourself a nursing facility or an elder assisted care home, as to whether or not you provide twenty-four hour nursing service. We didn't want to limit this application to one or the other because we needed that flexibility in terms of how this is ultimately built out. So we're basically asking for the most restricted requirement with respect to that. So these are all kind of very, I'll say, interesting provisions because you kind of have to bounce around the code to get to the right answers. But with Mr. Huckins' help, we were able to do that. And so we're invoking mostly the footnotes that are in your table of uses because these uses relate to triggering those footnotes. So for the nursing facility and/or elderly assisted care facility, we are looking for forty-seven bedrooms in, to get to a total of sixty-two, where either twenty-nine, if you're looking at one footnote, is permitted, or fifteen is permitted. So we're using the fifteen because that would be the most conservative way to look at it and ask you for relief. So I'm sorry that that's a little convoluted, but that's the way the footnotes kind of point to us. With respect to the second variance, we're looking for twenty-five additional units, where seven are permitted. And if you can imagine, our surprise, when we find that the density is calculated at forty thousand per square feet for, for two units, that gets us, in terms of the uplands, that gets us to only seven permitted units in a fifty-five and older. So obviously, I, that's fairly restrictive. And, and one of the things that I thought was interesting, again, and I think I mentioned it in the beginning, is that if, if we took the parking calculations that are separate from this in terms of what we're trying to do in terms of density, we would be able to put all that parking on this site. And I think that illustrates how appropriate this site is for the uses that we're trying to utilize. Again, that metric of how many parking spaces would you need is overblown because basically in the assisted, excuse me, in the nursing facility, you're really not going to use, you're going to use ten percent of those spaces. you're really not going to use, you're going to use 10% of those spaces. These people who are the clients of that facility, one of the objectives is in essence to stop them from driving and to protect them. So we think that you have to kind of keep that in mind, that even though the site supports that, we're not using that. And we think that's an important way of looking at this project. The other issue that we wanted to kind of address upfront was, we fully expect, obviously, if we get approval from you tonight, to go to the planning board. Planning board will vet this project, including not only the parking but the access. And, you know, at this point, we're showing a plan that has four points of access. They're clearly going to be looking at that issue. The public is going to be able to look at how we address that. They're going to have experts with respect to traffic, counts and consultants. But the planning board will obviously be able to address those concerns. And again, if you look at the major uses in terms of these facilities, they're close to the entrance point to Route 125 and Route 9. And obviously, there is access on Maliko Road as well. But in any event, what I'd like to do is- No, I'm going to just go through the criteria for the variance. And then I'm going to ask Mr. Hopkins to come up and give you a little bit of sense of why this seems appropriate to him and give him the chance to listen to those points that he has to make.
As you move through the criteria for the variance, are you suggesting that the criteria you're proposing applies to both-
Yes.
-of the variances or all four of-
Yes.
Variants as requested? Okay, thank you.
I am. Your application starts with the hardship, so I'll do that, the unnecessary hardship. And again, I too will not read the whole criteria for that, but it does start with the special conditions existing and what the rationale and relationship is between the restrictions, which is the density issue, and whether or not they really are required to be applied, or is it unnecessary in this case? And that's the way I look at this test. The hardship is that we need the density to be feasible. We need the density to provide for an opportunity for healthcare professionals to be at the assisted living building. And we can't do that with 15 beds. We can't have those kind of professionals providing those services. Again, if you go back to what I provided in my materials, we're looking at geriatric care, medical assistance, hospice, gym, exercise and nutrition programs. Again, those things that can be available to the other buildings, 55 and older, but they cost money, but they cost people power. And in order to make that feasible, we have to have more than the limit that's allowed. And it would be unnecessary, in this instance, given the buffering that we have, but also given the size of the lot, which is really unique in this situation, to limit these facilities just to those numbers. And that's why we believe there is an unnecessary hardship and that there is no connection or general relationship between that restriction and restricting this particular building and these uses to that density in order to protect any general intent of the ordinance. The ordinance will, that intent will be protected in this instance. Again, if you know the area and you saw our pictures, there's a large amount of buffering that goes on. It's a perfect location for the residents to be there. It's a perfect location for existing residents of Barrington to utilize this facility. They're close by. They can stay within their community, or they can stay just next door to their spouse. So for all of those reasons, we believe there's an unnecessary hardship and that we meet that criteria with respect to-
Repeat that. Paul, did you ask for that to be repeated, or did someone else-
I must have unmuted them.
No, I did not.
Okay, someone who's observing the meeting stated something. I'm sorry, continue.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we do think that that applies to the density issue, which kind of triggers the two, or you say four, because there's all these different footnotes of those requirements. The next test is whether the granting of the variances would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. And I think I'll just start by saying, this is, again, breathing to life the original intent of what the town center was looking to provide. We're here for a variance in the density for these two buildings. We're not looking for a variance with respect to the other uses. But those uses will be obviously limited to that area. But this project will open up this area to the general public. We show tennis courts, pickleball courts, a bandstand, but that area is going to be dedicated to public use. And again, as I said, we understand that the town is excited about that. We're looking to provide it. It, again, dovetails completely with what we're trying to provide in terms of onsite residential use. But again, it's limited residential use. It's limited to the assisted living and it's limited to the 55 and older facility. So we think that comes together. So we clearly think that this is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. This is what the ordinance is trying to provide. At one point, it was trying to provide seven buildings of senior housing. We're focused on what we're asking for, and we think it's consistent with that, the spirit of the ordinance. The third test is whether the granting of the variance will result in the diminution of surrounding property values. And this is, to start, this is in the town center. And, you know, the intent of the town center district is to provide a high density of commercial development, civic uses and public open spaces, and alternative housing concepts within the community. We're doing exactly what anyone would do in terms of providing that. What we're really doing at the same time is providing that alternative housing. But what we're not providing is what is also available to be done in this parcel. Again, this is 13 acres. That 13 acres, we could put a billiard parlor, bowling alleys, a brewery, a gasoline station, grocery store, hotels and restaurants with drive-throughs. We could also put churches and schools. Those are very intense uses. And that's the distinction here, is even though we're asking for a density variance, our use, our intensity, and the intensity that it reflects upon the community is going to be less than what 13 acres of all of those uses could produce. So if there's an issue of traffic, this is the best plan that anyone could see in an area. And that's why, given that zoning encompasses those types of uses, we don't see this plan as diminishing the property values. And again, it's because of that less intense use. The fourth test is whether those variances will do substantial justice. And you were aware that this is a balancing test between whether the benefit to the applicants outweighs the burden to the public for the reason that I've suggested. I think this is not a burden to the public at all. This is a benefit to the public. It's going to open up that area for public use. It's going to create uses that are vitally necessary for the town of Barrington in terms of the elder care. That when you listen to Mr. Hopkins, you'll understand those other resources that Barrington residents could utilize are being stretched to the max and maybe not even available at this point. So we believe that there's no negative aspect to this, to the town. And we believe that substantial justice would be done in terms of allowing the density increase in order to provide this kind of service to this area and to the town. Whether the granting of the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, this, again, we've submitted this as a reasonable use. The specific needs of the town center district are going to be addressed and accomplished. And again, the test legally is whether this alters the essential character of the locality or does harm. And if you know that area, which I'm sure you all do, you know that it's heavily buffered. And if this is an area where those kinds of uses that I described are going to be put, then the essential character of that community is going to be made up of those uses at some point. This is not going to alter that. In fact, this is going to fit in in a way that is less obtrusive than all of those other types of uses that could be utilized. It's 13 acres of a site that's going to, you know, have very low impact in terms of its uses to the area. And again, we're going to go through full site plan review. We're expecting that the planning board's going to look at any issues with respect to traffic. But I think they're going to find that it's going to be pleasing to them. I think I mentioned, if I didn't, we went to them on October 4th to do a preliminary consultation. And I think this project received well. I think comments that said, you know, this really links up with what our intent or what the intent was, that it was very complimentary to that. And so I think that was, you know, something we wanted to make sure that we pass that test. And I think we did in front of the planning board. So those are the issues with respect to the five criteria. And I think what I'd like to do is ask Mr. Hopkins to come up and just give you his sense of his experience and a little taste of his expertise. So I'll yield to him.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board, citizens of Barrington. I hope you can hear me. I'll try to give you a crash course in geriatrics with a couple of disclaimers and transparency. Transparency and full disclosure, number one, I have no financial interest in this project. Transparency, number two, Dan Gabriel sold me two pieces of land, which became Bellamy Fields and Watson Fields 10 and 12 years ago. I went through the planning and zoning boards in Dover successfully, and I have two 50, 55-bed facilities operating now. And I've taken care of over 1,000 people, one of whom I'm going to talk about because I asked her at the time for her permission, little did I know, but that I would tell people her story someday. The short story of my history is I'm a doctor of public health. And you all now know what public health is the hard way. Dr. Fauci and I foisted on you the worst epidemic in 100 years. And it came to Bellamy Fields. And I saw what it did to geriatrics. I now understand as a scientist why the elderly were so affected by the COVID virus and what has become of us with vaccines and booster shots. And I'm now proud to say, again, as a scientist and a grandfather, my seven-month-old got a COVID shot recently. Pros and cons, it's not a political statement, it's simply a scientific one. My history in New Hampshire is thanks to Don Shumway, who was the Health and Human Services Director in the state for years, Secretary of Health and Human Services. He saw geriatrics coming. He invited a friend of his, who was a friend of mine, to come to Frisbee Hospital in 1984. And then they gave me a floor of the hospital to invent geriatric psychiatry. If any of you knew Vince DeNoble at the time, he was quite a character. After 20 years at Frisbee Hospital, I went into the assisted living business, having taken care of my dying parents. I'm an only child, so it was the right thing to do. And as a consequence of my father, who was dying, saying to me, "Why is the end of my life not like the middle?" He was in a nursing home. He was wearing somebody else's pajamas. He was in pain because he had lymphoma, but it hadn't been four hours. So he couldn't have any more medicine. So I'm here as a product of that. Along the way, I've been president of the Seacoast Hospice Board. Some of you may know the Hyder Family Hospice House. The Hyder brothers were kind enough to give us a check for $1 million back in the day to build the Hyder House, which didn't turn out to be what I had hoped it to be. And I was also the president of the Board of Compass Care in Portsmouth, which is an Alzheimer's daycare and a senior citizen center. Around 2008, unbeknownst to us, the troubled asset relief program, which some of you who are business people will remember better than I, blew up the endowments of not-for-profits like Compass Care and the Seacoast Hospice. I was the signatory which sold the Hyder House to Ametisus, or actually Beacon Hospice, which in turn was selling itself to Ametisus, which in turn already had a deal to throw in the keys. I was hoping that Wentworth Thubbs would go into the hospice business. They didn't. They had their own financial issues at the time. So that's the quick background of the pleasure that I have had since 1984. Prior to that, I was in the Veterans Administration. And my background in psychiatry and public health led me to develop Bellamy and Watson Fields for Alzheimer's and Parkinson's and end-of-life care. The end-of-life care story, which is poignant for this time of year, I would say this is healthcare of Christmas past. Arlene Califf died at Bellamy Fields. She came to me soon after I opened the facility. She had gone to the hospital, and again, I have her permission to tell the story. Her kidneys were failing. She went on dialysis. She moved into a nursing home. But she said to me, "I'm only on dialysis because I want to live to see my great-granddaughter born. When that happens, I'm going to take myself off dialysis, and you're going to tell me that's okay." And I thought, whoa, what a formidable woman. Her great-granddaughter was born one Saturday morning. They called me and said, "Arlene won't get on the bus. She said she's quitting dialysis today." I said, as now is the cliche, "You go, girl." And she was in control of her own destiny. That's the pitch I'm making for the town center project as far as healthcare goes. That's the past of healthcare. If any of you, you're in the center of the healthcare universe here because a little bit west of here, you've got Concord Hospital. To the south, you've got Exeter. To the east, you've got Portsmouth. To the north, you've got Wentworth Thubbs. I'm sorry to say, as a political comment of sorts, I don't know what's going to happen to Frisbee. But if any of you have used a community hospital lately, they're struggling. They're having a very hard time. The viruses, the emergency rooms, everybody's in the same boat. If you read the blog, you know, that's all you see. You can't staff it. Nobody knows what's coming. I can tell you what's coming if you support a project like this, that public health, geriatrics, nursing and medicine, Christmas future of geriatric healthcare is a nurse with a backpack, with a stethoscope, with good Wi-Fi, and she would be able to see you on the first, second or third floors. I'll speak to the density issue in a moment also. But this is only the same, hardly the same size as Bellamy and Watson. So speaking from experience, this is not a massive number of people. But today, if we were in business and your grandmother had a junkie cough, our nurse would put a stethoscope on her. If she didn't like what she heard, the nurse practitioner would order a chest X-ray. You wouldn't go to the emergency room for the chest X-ray. The chest X-ray travels. The chest X-ray comes to you. Somewhere in the nether world, a radiologist will read the chest X-ray, and and she will say, left lower lobe pneumonia. The nurse practitioner who works for us would say, okay, Levuquin. Uh five hundred twice a day for ten days. Uh it'll be delivered tonight from the pharmacy that services the town center healthcare. We would treat pneumonia today without having you go to the emergency room. And we would treat you effectively, and you would be asleep in your own bed instead of somebody else's. And the way things are going in community care, the elderly who are becoming increasingly immune compromised, as would have been the case with Mrs. Caleb's kidney failure, uh the the hospital is actually not a good place to be. And I'm gonna mention, I'll call it the fifteen and fifty rule. Fifteen percent of the population are my age, which is geriatrics on Medicare. We use fifty percent of the hospital beds in America. I'm guessing that when you implement public health geriatrics on a project scope like this, probably two-thirds of that will go away. The people who are in the emergency room at Wentworth Douglas tonight, uh and then this is going to get more complicated, are not gonna be admitted to the med surg floors. They're going to be turned around, they're gonna be given an antibiotic. If this project is developed and you lived in one of the cottages, you might move into what I would call the infirmary, or if you were in the Navy sick bay. Uh instead of going to the hospital, you would go from the cottage into the infirmary. And if you were dehydrated, as elderly people get, and when they have pneumonia, you would get your IV antibiotic, you would get rehydrated, you would be in sick bay for a couple of days, and you'd be home for Christmas. That's the future of Christmas future. It's public health geriatrics. It will tie in nicely with the training that the university is doing across a number of dimensions. Right now, I train the high school kids at Dover High School uh for LNA. The Career Tech Center uses uh Watson Fields for about twenty-five people a year. That's the next generation of healthcare. I trained nurses from Great Bay in psychiatric nursing and also in hospice. But the future of healthcare can come to town center. You don't have to go out to get it. Uh it it's my pleasure to describe what we've done to this point and to offer you a vision, which would be to say in summary, I'm not here to reinvent the wheel. I'm here to tune the car. It's already in place. Uh it it works. The size of the density, lastly, is that the industry standard because of having to pay high school kids uh a wage that competes with McDonald's and nurses aides who are going to twenty dollars an hour, whether you like it or not, and LPNs and RNs who are going to thirty, thirty-five, forty-five, fifty dollars an hour. The the scope that these gentlemen are proposing to go to sixty-four beds is absolutely essential. You've got housekeeping and maintenance and laundry, and you've got a large infrastructure. Not a lot of people, but it's twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. And and anything less than the number of beds they're proposing is probably not a viable business model. So I know the healthcare works. I hope you can understand the need for them to get to this level in order to get to the style of care. And lastly, I I've known Dan as a good steward of the land. If you've been to Bellamy or Watson Fields, you'll see what pretty properties they are. Uh they're on the Bellamy, they're on the Pacheco. The uh the notion that that this is going to be a monstrosity and obstruct none of the beauty of the parcel, uh it just isn't gonna happen. This is not a hard project to do on the size of the land that you're talking about, and it'll bring great value and quality of life to the elders of Barrington. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
I have a couple of questions for you. Um I know that in reviewing the Bellamy Fields and Watson that you have subscribed to a model where two patients or two clients are residing in a room for their socialization. And I'm wondering if that is dictated by just your programming model or if the state of New Hampshire and your licensing model decides how many clients to a room or how many they serve at your facility?
Yes, ma'am. Personal uh professional view, I believe if you have Alzheimer's, and I'll be a little vulgar, when you're losing your mind, two heads are better than one. So I pitched families for having roommates. I I put uh veterans together. I put Red Sox fans together. Occasionally, I put Republicans and Democrats together. They 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 don't do well together. But the the roommates model for me, uh since there is no fewer Alzheimer's coming, uh being with another live person uh to me has added value. The ladies make great roommates, the guys are a little harder to buddy up, but that's that's my choice based on my belief system of the diseases.
Mm-hmm. And then um should this variance be approved, what would stand in the way of taking sixty-two bedrooms and making it a hundred and twenty-four clients or patients?
This may call for, that that may be above my grade level, but when if we were to apply for beds in the state of New Hampshire today, from the healthcare perspective, I have to go through the Bureau of Health Facilities and ask for a license which sets the number of beds. So that's that's determined by a separate licensure process. Uh health safety, life safety, I get two surveys a year from the state. And again, in the interest of disclosure, because I own these properties, I they're not full. I I won't fill them if I can't staff them. But uh the eight oh four, eight oh five are the levels of licensure that the Bureau of Health Facilities uh in Concord regulates. So way down the road, you have to apply, you have to apply for a license to operate beds a certain way if they're going to be licensed as assisted living.
Okay. Are your two facilities own city water and sewer in Dover?
Yes.
Okay. And are, may I ask, do you operate a for-profit or not-for-profit model?
Uh until the pandemic came along, I was a for-profit business.
He's still for-profit. He's not making a profit.
I understand.
I hope to be so someday again.
I face full taxes. Yes.
I understand. Okay. Um and I I'll ask you, Mr. Gabriel, do you have the intention of building the facility and selling it?
We have the capability. Um Mr. Meter, who's here, owns Boudel Construction. Um we have the capability and we have the financing to do it. Um my hopes are to be able to first get through tonight and then find somebody like John or somebody in the field first to see if they have if they have an interest in doing it. So I can't.
Would you say an interest in doing, an interest in obtaining the facility after it's built?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Or they or they might have their own builder, a friend like Riverwoods has their own builder. They wouldn't have us build it. So we have the capability of doing it. I'm getting along in age, and I don't know if I have enough expertise in that area, so I'm gonna rely upon the professionals to do that.
Okay. Uh it's a really, it's a it's a large request.
Yeah.
Frisbee is under VHF, allowed a hundred and nineteen beds. They operate eighty. And that's a very large facility. Potentially here with sixty-two rooms, you're talking a hundred and twenty-four clients. That's that's a rather robust um we facility.
We um I I know John doubles people up. I wouldn't have an issue with you limiting the amount of patients to sixty-four. So if we doubled, that would allow other rooms for other purposes.
And could I ask, um is there a reason that you're not forward to this current time?
My relationship with Dan over the years, my interest in geriatrics, and just this year, uh we were sort of reunited with his reaching out uh as he does every couple of years, you know, how's it going, what's going on? We we did all those things.
I was thinking more of a supply and demand perspective. You mentioned that Bellamy and Watson were not completely forward.
I think you mentioned staffing issues.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes. I I don't operate beds that I can't uh staff safely. I have a waiting.
Patient ratio.
I have a waiting list.
Okay, I'm just, okay. That's helpful for me. Um does anyone else on the board have questions? I jumped right in. Please.
I'm probably not on it yet. Well, maybe I need to. We're we're still on the first variants, right?
Well, they combined, so um I'm gonna try and pronounce your name, but so I'll say.
That's it.
Okay, yeah. So um you used the criteria for both variants, so so you can ask in reference to either.
Okay, I'm looking at the fifty-five and older housing, and I'm just, my question is, what is to prevent or to ensure that that houses only fifty-five and older people? Do that be sixty-five and older? That would be closer to the geriatrics, I would believe. I mean.
But then, so the sixty-five and older um sets forth a lot of additional criteria that we may not be able to meet. For instance, program in the building, that just puts more staff that that in that facility. The traditional way of limiting uh uh the uh age restriction and to still be legal under the Fair Housing Act is to utilize the fifty-five and older restriction. Uh most towns who adopt an elderly ordinance call it the fifty-five and older ordinance for a reason, because the sixty-five and older provision that does exist requires so much programming that those projects never get built or rarely get built.
Yes, there is one in Concord.
Right, I shouldn't say never, because that's not what I'm saying to say, but but it's very uncommon. And it's very um inordinate, and it doesn't um really become practical in terms of it doesn't come to fruition. Uh so that's why towns use that fifty-five and older. You'll see that in many ordinance.
So we can rest assured that in a fifty-five and older, the fifty-five and older on independent living, there wouldn't be someone's son or daughter move in with their three kids?
The uh provisions would allow for that because someone has to be fifty-five and older, but yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes.
On the fifty-five and older, I wanna go back to that.
Yeah.
Um what does the Fair Housing Act require that the person fifty-five years of age or older live in the home as a percentage of time during the year?
They assume that they live there a hundred percent of the, I'll say, I'm I'm.
Primary residents.
Yeah, as a primary residence. I mean, I I if they went away for a couple of weeks, I'm sure, okay, but it's a primary residence status. It would be someone who's fifty-five and older. So you wouldn't want, and the or the statute wouldn't protect someone who's fifty-five and older buying it and then renting it out to a bunch of college kids or something like that.
No, understood. But but the fifty-five-year-old person, as you just said, could um for instance, go south for the winter? And as long as they retain their Barrington address as their primary?
Um I I can't be specific in that legal answer, but I I'm very, very close to being a hundred percent sure that's the case.
Right. And can I just say one thing? We we purposely made it fifty-five because that's what the vision statement said. It's all over. It's like fifty-five is all over that document, not another number.
And and I think there is a synergy, as I explained, between a couple and I, because I I had this conversation with John earlier, a couple finding themselves in that position where someone wants to be or can be in the uh independent living, um but have a spouse who's in that assisted living. Uh that happens more than we think, because we, I'm fifty-five and older too, never think that we're gonna be in this position until we see a family member in it, which uh John's helped my family as well, but uh so in any event, that was one of the synergies that we are relying upon as well in terms of the size of the fifty-five being utilized for that, as well as people in Barrington wanting to stay in Barrington, that old traditional, where's the fifty-five and older housing in Barrington? Well, it could be right here, and it could be here to help a lot of people who are living in Barrington, wanna downsize but wanna stay in Barrington, and then wanna stay in the town center where they can walk to the post office. They can walk to a medical office building. They can be near their grandchildren at the school. This is where that could happen, and this would be the benefit, that would be a benefit to this town. Because I don't think there are a lot of places that are available, and this could be that one.
Vice Chair Bailey, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Uh we get back to the fifty-five and older, and you say they have them there. Is that going to be uh in line with the income that they have, or is it going to be?
No.
It it thank you on that from there. Do you have some more?
Certainly.
My other my other question is that when we talked about, you talked about town center and having uh several courts and everything else, uh I I I personally envision turning around and making reservations and everything else. And so if your clientele that live there, that your paying customers live there, that would forego any space for uh Barrington residents to come there. Is that correct?
No, the man, the management of those public areas are run by the recreation.
That's right.
They would set the bookings at time. We have nothing to do with that.
Yeah, it would just be other, they would then be other Barrington residents. They would have no priority with respect to those other facilities that are on that.
And if the rec department decided that they didn't wanna do that, then how would you hit, how would you handle those?
The way the town center is set up and the PUD specifically as well is that you provide for these spaces for the town to take that role. And the town, so the town created this situation. And by the way, we've had discussions, and the town and the rec department are excited about those possibilities. So I think it will uh come, you know, it will be come come to life the way the town envisioned when they created that provision.
I appreciate the information, because the rec department didn't share it with me.
Uh Vice Chair Bailey is also on our select board, so he would actually be one of the five deciding how the budget plays out for any of those facilities you're mentioning.
Yeah, but but also you'd be involved with guiding how this would e-evolve, you know, because you you as the uh the town created the ordinance that said, give us this area to play with. We would keep it and, you know, probably put a park there or something. We're not looking for more density. If we didn't have that provision, we were saying to the town, okay, you go do what you want with it. And so that's what we're doing. We're doing exactly what the ordinance.
That's what that shift thing is, that the town is bringing forward.
Bring it forward, yeah.
The reason I bring that up to you is because back in uh two thousand and three, I believe, I was on the select board, I turned around and set up a program. And you would have elderly housing where TurboCam now sets. And thinking I was all set with that, I took the family, went to Disney. Down, spent a lot of time in Disney, came back, and I was the one that was busy. Because they turned around and said, no, we're not going to make this come forward and set it up for elderly housing. So that's why I have a lot of concern. I think it's there. Now that I'm at that age, well, I'm gonna, you know.
Well, the the best part about what you just said is that what we're doing is we're proposing this. So that's really a condition of your approval, is that that's what we're gonna do. We're not gonna take the fifty-five and older and then all of a sudden scrap that idea and make it something else.
As I know you must be aware, there are certain medical facilities in around this town that uh set up for everybody would have. And so with that in mind, how would you, as uh as it was stated, elderly care for uh uh non-residents like a would it be like a medical office for the uh res, non-residents?
There is a medical.
Would they be able to share in uh what you provide?
Yeah, I'll I'll let Dan talk to how that in that vision is.
If you, oh, the plan's over there, but if you look in the upper left-hand corner of the plan, there's a five thousand square foot medical office. We would, we would, that would be an independent doctor, and he would see the whole town. He's not, that is not restricted. Who are you? If we have medical staff in the building, they're dedicated to the people in the building. So it's separate.
And and my my last question to you is that when you talked about uh I must get this correct, because I don't like the legal challenge. Five facts.
Okay. Um quick question. How would you ensure that Barrington residents were given priority both in the assisted living environment and in the housing?
Uh I don't think I suggest that they get priority, but it's certainly available to them. I don't know that we could enforce that or that the town could. But what we do, when I look at this, is I look at the geography and where it is. And um my brother, who died at forty-five of brain cancer, was under the care of John and his facility, and that and we needed that to be local. We could have gone somewhere else with his end-of-life care, and we decided to go virtually down the road. And I would think that if this facility is in Barrington, you have now opened up that possibility to everyone in Barrington. Would someone in Rochester apply and be? Why not? Of course. Um but we're not asking you to judge this application on that criteria. But we're not asking you to judge this application on that criteria. But I think it's fair to say, and rational to say, that that's how this will work. And it was for my family when my brother, brother-in-law passed away. I went to John because he was literally there. I could have gone somewhere else, we didn't. So I think that's how it will work.
Barrington's an interesting community, we're twelve point eight percent sixty-five and older and ten point nine percent those living with disabilities. We tend to actually be a relatively young community with still growing educational numbers in our schools, so we're interested in that, we're going. Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah. First of all, I really appreciated your opening statement, Mr. Gabriel, and I don't doubt your sincerity. Mr. Hopkins, I would love to have a lunch with you to discuss some of your it doesn't play a role in this, but I appreciate you caring so much for the elderly, it's becoming a bigger part of the population. And me being one of those, I do appreciate it sincerely. And this is a big change for the town, obviously. I have just a huge scope of things. Can I ask at this point, how, what is the sequence you would do to open this whole thirteen parcel, thirteen acre question? Have you thought about that?
Just wanted to get through tonight first, we have, I would think that it would take us a year to get through engineering, you know, traffic surveys, planning department, I'm sure there'll be numerous meetings at the planning department. So I don't see, at the earliest, this wouldn't start till twenty twenty-four, at the earliest.
And how long would you think it would be to do in its entirety?
In its entirety?
Yeah.
I wish I had a crystal ball about the economy, I don't know.
No, we all.
You know, I think, I think the daycare facility, from what I understand, and I think there might even be people here tonight that might know more about daycare in Barrington, but there's a long waiting list. I think the daycare will probably go very quick. The medical office, the hospital's buying up doctors everywhere, and they're putting them all in the hospital. So we've got to find somebody that's willing to practice outside of that environment. I don't know how long that'll take, but that would be, I wish to be able to get a family practice there that is going to service the community.
As a senior citizen, I wish you were putting in a drugstore as well. Especially since the limiting hours that are occurring.
If we cut the parking down, we might have room for a drugstore.
Well, my next question actually is for parking, so. The parking that you stated, is that adequate for people who are going to visit the elderly residents there?
What are your experiences with parking?
Once again, over a thousand lives served for a decade or twelve years. At this time, among all of my residents, nobody drives. We have the touchy subject that I take more time, I hope this doesn't sound vulgar, I take away people's licenses, I don't give them. My people who have Alzheimer's, who are poor drivers, so long story short, the number of residents of the healthcare cottages or the assisted living facilities are going to decrease statistically and knowingly in the rate that they operate automobiles, glaucoma, cataracts, neuropathy, dementia. They decline for driving. The ratio I was going to pitch, and I suspect you know what it is in schools, is that when you get elders, it's still a little bit elusive, but my hundred and four-year-old guest at Bellamy Fields doesn't have a lot of friends anymore. She's got some family, so without beating around the bush for you, the number of visitors of the elderly tend to be family members because the other eighty-five-year-olds aren't driving, et cetera, so the the rate of visitors tends to be related only to the number of family who are driving, and then earlier, the staffing of people coming and going.
My biggest concern with all this is the Milego Road issue, and the amount of construction that's going to be occurring, and the amount of equipment that's going to be in and out of there. Have you thought about how you can relieve that issue for these residents? They use Milego Road, and there's no doubt that it's used. I use it because I have a post office box, so I use it all the time, and I'm a little bit concerned personally as well, but I know that a lot of residents in the area are concerned about that too. How would you be able to alleviate that situation?
You're talking about the construction period.
For now, yeah, just the construction.
Certainly, you know, the planning board could direct and dedicate an entrance for construction vehicles, and we can post that, that's one way we can address that. I don't think there's a property in Barrington that has access in four areas. So what we intend to do is, the next step would be to have a traffic engineer make his proposal, make the best use of the property, address that concern for construction, and then when we go to the planning board, the planning board would have the ultimate decision. The planning board could say, everything comes in off of one twenty-five. If that's the case, and obviously the state has to go along with that, because it's a state highway, then we're good with that. There might not be any traffic on Milego Road, so we have no you know, as developers of this site, we have no request as to how many or where those entrances are, you people decide.
It's also a concern for moving out too, obviously.
Yes, which also would require state approval as well.
Right.
Just one last thing, under number five, granted variance will not be contrary to public interest. It says as such, the proposed use will not be contrary to public use, that the use will not alter the essential characteristics of the county. It certainly will, in my opinion, alter that, and you've got to judge the benefit of doing it versus not doing it. And I appreciate what you're trying to do, but people coming from the Milego area, Milego Road area, walking, and how do they access that? You know, safety concerns are the issue, my last issue I want to bring up, as well as, it does change.
Yeah, so just to kind of put it in the context of what we're here for is only with respect to the increase in density for these two buildings.
I understand.
Right, so what we've offered is that with the buffering that we're going to have in place, the density relates to mass, and that's not going to alter the essential character, because it's going to be buffered by that view. But at the same time, something is going to go on these thirteen acres that's permitted use in the town center. So something is coming, and with respect to this project and the increased density, is it going to alter the characteristic with respect to what the permitted uses are? And our argument is, no, it's not. In fact, it's going to be a diminished use with what could be permitted. And I think we've illustrated that, and I think it's common sense that when you have an assisted living facility that has a group of people that are not mobile, that density, that difference, and we could have a smaller one, that density isn't going to alter the characteristic of this community as it is now zoned as a town center zone.
One last quick question, people who want to access the tennis courts, the bocce court, all of those things, where are they going to park these?
Well, the town has parking, has separate.
Twenty, I think twenty-four spaces on that Revolve plan.
Right.
For parking.
Twenty-four spaces.
Yes, in that area as well, as the town does have a parking lot in that area as well.
On the corner of By, is it Els, the, I think.
New gravel area that was put in. It's actually, the town pulls an easement from the state, that's why in that area it could actually be expanded more.
Yeah, and then it's going to be under control of the town as well, so those.
The town decides they want thirty, they've got the room for it, so.
So for the sake of time, we're at eight forty-four right now, and we have not heard any testimony against the project, and no, you've asked excellent questions. Anyone else on the board have questions that they wanted to ask? Okay.
Any more questions? Talked about the elephant in this project and its money. Talked about that. And you have alluded on numerous occasions to the increase that you're asking for in the variances. How much of an effort does that play into what you're seeking, sir?
Well, the project, from our perspective, and talking to John, is how do we make it feasible, how do we make it work?
That's the word.
Yeah. Feasible does imply that you have to have a certain amount of income to provide the kind of services that this kind of facility will require. So in a sense, that plays a role, or the size, how we come to this size is related to how can we service this entity.
Well, okay.
Let me answer in plain English. If we had to build a building of twenty-nine, we would not do this project, there will be something else in front of you, it will not be a number of people.
Oh, I understand, I just wanted to find out the definition of density when they were using it under the hardship law. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, I am going to.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair has a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Oh, go right ahead. For people in the audience who wish to speak against the variance, please stick around. As soon as Mr. Tivino is done, we're going to do a quick bio break, and then we'll have you present. Please go ahead with your questions, Mr. Tivino.
So a lot of the conversation has evolved around assisted living, the elderly, nursing, and so on. And then we're talking about a large amount of these units being fifty-five and older. So obviously, a person fifty-five or older does not have to be disabled in order to qualify to rent one of these units, is that correct?
That's correct.
In the, in one of the buildings, yes.
Yes, okay. So my point is this, and Mr. Gabriel, I agree that your presentation was very eloquent when you spoke about your conversation with Mrs. Califf, and it sounds like she was at the age where she was really missing the care that she would have liked to have and remain in Barrington, and she certainly was over fifty-five years of age. So my question is, or more of a comment, these units will be occupied by people fifty-five and older. They're working, they have families, they're producing income, they're driving cars, they're living a normal life, they are not disabled. So now we have a person that comes along that is, say, sixty-two years of age or older, which is one of the Fair Housing Act's uses that can be restricted to, sixty-two years of age or older, and you don't have any place for them. There's no place, because all of these fifty-five healthy people are in there working, living, working, and there's no space for that person that it sounds like you're trying to create a living space for. So how do you justify allowing someone in their working years, fifty-five, to reside here when you have someone who is disabled, but there's no space left for them?
I think that's an excellent question, and we've talked about this.
Can I ask the audience that this is super, it's super difficult for anyone to hear the hearing online if there's talking, go ahead, sir.
I think the way we're going to approach it is that this building is tied in some fashion to the other building, and the fact that there may be services to this building, such as an Uber driver available to take them to doctor's appointments and take them somewhere. I said Uber driver, but it could be a private individual hired by the major facility. There's going to be dining options available to the people in the independent that don't want to cook anymore, and they want to, and that helps support the stat of being able to cook and so forth. I think that the tie of these two buildings will make it not attractive to somebody that has a family and is younger. That's my own personal opinion.
If the, have you thought about what a unit like this would rent for, so I'm speaking to affordability. So a family comes in, there's one fifty-five or older member, and of course, their family is allowed to stay there. If it's affordable enough, they will come. And again, it will push this disabled person who could use the services, but there's no space left for them, sixty-two years. Have you thought about restricting this to sixty-two years of age or older, which is what the Fair Housing Act allows as one of the exceptions?
Is that a question to me or to FX?
Yeah, well, I think I can speak to it, that that again, that sixty-two and older, and I misspoke, I said sixty-five and older, and meant sixty-two, does also require additional services and facilities that are not part of the fifty-five and older. That's why, again, I think we had that conversation that it's very unique, and I'll say rare almost, to see that kind of facility created, whether it has more density or not, because of those restrictions and requirements. But we're here tonight looking for that that density with respect to what is more typical in terms of that age-restricted housing, and I think Dan's comments are are pretty important to consider in that regard, because the kind of, even though we can't under your ordinance connect the building physically, because then it's one building, we see an integration with the two buildings working together. And I think he's right that it's not going to be very attractive to a couple with a family, particularly if we're limiting, I think we're limiting the bedroom count per unit.
Yeah, and the other point is, I think, Paul, by law, you can only have a maximum of twenty percent of younger folks living in a fifty-five and older building. And that would be twenty percent of thirty-two units. So what is that? That's six-six. So I don't think it's going to be attractive to a family to move into this building.
What's the consequence if the fifty-five or older person moves out and the family's left behind? What happens with that family?
Well, the requirement is that it has to be one person fifty-five and older has to be in eighty percent of the units, which I think is exactly what Dan was just describing.
I understand, but how do you monitor that? And I'm not trying to be argumentative, I can just see with all of these units and people coming and going, and now the fifty-five-year-old leaves this unit, the abutters the neighbors them though, but how does this, who enforces this? And do they actually go over and tell these folks, you're getting an eviction notice, you're no longer qualified to be here, your family is not fifty-five, you have no one here to represent that age group?
A project of this size typically would have an onsite manager, so it'd be very hard to do something without recognizing what's happening, plus these people will be signing leases.
Right.
And they'd be breaking the lease if they, if somebody else moved in and we didn't know about it, so.
That's a good point, they'd be signing leases, and the lease would, in effect, require the fifty-five or older person to be there. And if that ceased to happen, then they would have to vacate.
Right.
Any other questions, Ms. Tivino?
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Hopkins, this is going to be our last group of questions.
It's just a general question. I have a friend whose parents were getting elderly, and they decided to sell their house. And they bought, which is kind of unusual, in this facility, they had available condos or cottages, they bought a cottage in this facility. And the facility also had an assisted living nursing home type care. And the goal was to live here among your peers, and then eventually, when you're ill or older, you progress.
That's what we expected, yeah.
And so I was wondering if you considered doing that and turning the thirty-two units into condos?
We have thought of that. I mean, that could be, that could be an option, I think under the Hampshire law, you could make a condo out of them.
The whole of this facility is, I can ask her, she used to actually work with us. And it worked out with both their parents, because one of them got very ill and moved into the the nursing facility, and he passed, and the mother still had. and moved into the nursing facility, and he passed, and the mother still had her place until she got ill, and then.
The downside is, with respect to what was previously asked, is when you provide ownership of that unit, you lose some of the power. You're not on a lease now, and you're not able to adjust or move or remove, you know, when abuses start. So, you know, there's a, there's a double edge to that.
There was, there was definitely a lot of restrictions.
I'm reciting.
Yeah, she was, they were already restricted.
Okay. Any, any other questions before we move to, yes, sir?
Motion for adjournment for seven minutes.
Motion to adjourn for seven minutes, and when we return, we'll be hearing those opposed to the variance. Or, I'm sorry, or in favor, you're right. My apologies, men. Okay.
How many restrooms do you have?
I have two of them right up down the hallway there.
Yeah.
Parents are.
Thanks for being so helpful.
Follow you there, gonna see your face again.
I can sniff out food anyway.
Okay, Mr. Tivino. Hi, sir. I'm back. Anyone that would like to speak on behalf of the project and the variance, please raise your hand. We'll have you come to the podium. State your name, please, and your address, where you reside here in Barrington.
My name is Jackie Lambert. I live just across from George Kalif. My address is 30 Malago Road. First, I'm going to state that I'm not necessarily opposed to the use as proposed for this. I think it all hangs together pretty well, but I do have some questions, some concerns. There is going to be a large number of people utilizing this property. What provision has been made for water and sewage? The house that I live in has water with a dug well, and there's a little pond behind my place, which can't be developed. What's going to happen with the water table once wells or whatever it is that's being used starts working? There's no city water or sewer anywhere in Barrington. What's going to happen with the sewage that's generated? I don't know if there's any provision made for that, but I'm concerned about, is that going to pollute the groundwater and my well? So, I'm very concerned about that, and I'd like to ask the answers as to whether that's been, been considered. And then I have a couple of other questions.
Well, first, I'll share with you, there is, before the select board, which will, I assume, be coming for the residents of the town of Barrington, something called it, and I'll, Mr. Bailey couldn't speak better to this. It's a little off-topic, but there is a TIFF, T-I-F, Vanessa, I've made.
TIFF district, yeah, that has nothing to do with water and sewer.
Well, it kind of does. It clusters commercial development in a way that has less of an impact on water usage. So, good question. I'm not sure that this variance speaks to that, this variance speaks to.
At the planning board, they can address those questions.
I understand that what we're talking about here is the variance.
Yes.
But before I say yea or nay on the variance, I'd like to know how these things are going to affect what decisions I'm going to express.
Yeah.
Okay, and people feel the same way.
Yep.
And since I'm, I'm going to be a very close neighbor to this whole thing, I think I really deserve to have some information.
I, I think honestly, as part of the engineering of the project, is when the water and sewer are addressed.
Well, that's nice, but that will only take place once the variance is granted.
I, I absolutely hear that, I do.
The other thing is too, and I had not thought about it, but although we were told that somebody else at some other time would decide where the entrances and exits are for this development, it's pretty plain from looking at this, that there's going to be at least one on Malago Road.
Yep.
Okay, now, Malago is used by a lot of kids who drive their bikes back and forth, a lot of people who walk their dogs, or a lot of people who just walk it recreationally. And Malago is a very residential area. Once the traffic starts coming in and out of that, wherever it's located, whether it's on one side of Georgia or on another one, that's going to change how Malago Road, the entire length of Malago Road actually, is going to be affected. And so, that's an important thing, too, is don't tell me that there isn't going to be something coming out, going in and out of Malago Road. And then also, in connection with that, one thing that was brought up was the construction period. Construction that size is probably going to take maybe about a year. Okay. It's bad enough that there is going to be this change that would take place, but to have construction stuff going back and forth on Malago Road for a year, that just doesn't cut it.
Is there anything else that you wanted to speak to? I've written down notes that you've spoken in reference to water, sewer, traffic, the change to the actual usage by pedestrians and bikers on Malago, and that you've addressed the issue of construction.
One other thing, and then maybe nobody is even concerned about that, and probably nobody gives a hoop, but from my house, right now, when I look across the street or down the street, it's dark, except for the two, couple of lights on the post office, which used to be very bright, and now they're more yellow, so it's very moderated. Light pollution now with all of this, all those parking spaces are going to be lit up all the time. Okay, they don't shut parking, parking lights, parking lot lights at night. So, the light pollution means that now, my whole neighborhood is going to be looking at those lights. And even though there's a buffer, you still see through that, especially in the wintertime when there are no leaves on the trees. So, this changes the character of, of our neighborhood completely. I know it affects 125 area more than that, but, you know, we're, we're all affected on Malago Road. And a lot of people, because they weren't direct abutters, didn't get the notice, but became aware of it after the fact. So, anyway, I'm the first one to talk, but.
Okay.
What, before I can say yes or no on whether I would go with this variance, and whether it even makes any difference, I just, I should say what I have to say and let you know.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak, please, Mr. Bailey?
Since I'm addressing the board rather than the audience, can I turn this around? So, when I refer to the plan, you'll know what I'm talking about.
Certainly.
My name is George Kalif. I live in this square right here. It's not Malago, it's Malago. I'll start here.
Started thinking I was pronouncing it wrong for 22 years.
This is my lot, but on there, it says 50-foot residential buffer. Buffer belongs down here, not my lawn. That little circle is my lawn. That's not a buffer. That's my property, and the buffer is down here. There is no buffer between the road and my property. Very little buffer between the road and my property on the other side. Setback in the rear, I'm not sure what that is, might be 10 feet, 5 feet? I don't really see how that meets the setback. I apologize, Dan, when I first saw the plan, I didn't bring these to your attention, but I didn't, couldn't read the credit on the little one you gave me. Very concerned about water and septic. I didn't see any septic on the plan.
No water on there?
Is, was it complete? Septic is being complete with no septic shown on the plan.
Mr. Kalif, I'm going to let Vanessa speak to this. We have been told.
Two wells, two-well radius.
George, wait a minute, please.
We have been told.
Am I turned to talk? No, just give us some of this, please.
Just one minute.
To the sewer and the wells. We have been, I'll let Vanessa speak to this.
Sir, just letting you know, this is a conceptual plan to, to show you the layout of it, too. So, this has not gone, it's only gone for the planning board for the conceptual review, which is nonbinding, to get comments back from the planning board. They have not gone for, for the planning board for their formal application.
How can we speak for, for the various without the information we need to make a decision?
Right, so the variance is for the density. It doesn't address the wells or the access at this time. That goes through the planning board process. That's just for everybody, not just directed at you, to let everybody know. They still have to go through the planning board, through this process. Not that your comments here aren't valid and not being heard, but they're, the board here is just looking strictly at the density of the project versus the necessary, the entirety of the project. And that's where the planning board, when it goes, when they do their formal application, will also address those.
I actually saw this as a bit of a curveball in the first place. Normally, you go to the planning board and get the plans, and then you ask for the variance.
Yeah, the planning board to get a conceptual review, which means that notification, the buyer's not notified because it's nonbinding. Actually, went to board to see if there's something that they should look at and during, before they submit a formal designs, they don't have to.
I really liked the idea of having something available in Barrington. I can relate to that probably more than anybody in the room. My wife has been in a nursing home for about three years. I don't think anybody's going to stay there any longer than they have to because it costs a ton of money, but. I like this idea of the sidewalk. I'm one of the ones that you see walking down the road with a little white dog. It gets me going, and it's good for both of us. But I'll tell you, you take your life in your hands doing it now. We've got school traffic coming out down here that never was supposed to happen. Originally, that school was built or proposed with no entrance. The reason I'm bringing up school in this is it's side by side. The school traffic contributes a lot here. Anyway, that, the school plan was shown down three times until they moved the entrance from Malago to 125. Then, all of a sudden, we have to have an emergency entrance. Then, it's buses in emergency, and then the gates open 24 hours a day. And the principal told me one day, I've got 400 cars coming out of here. Kids picking up their work to bring home. It's open to all comers now, and it's extremely dangerous to walk on the road. There's no way to get off. There's no enforcement whatsoever of either the emergency exit or speed on that road. I've mentioned it, but they choose not to. They're enforced emergency exit only. As far as locating the sidewalk, I'm a little concerned about that. I'm not sure how wide the right of way is. The very nice road now has been regraded. The shoulders are, in some places, three feet deep. So, if you step off, you're done. That's all going to have to be built or something. So if you step off, you're done. That's all going to have to be built or something, it's going to be very costly. But having served six years on the road right now, and what happened down at Village Place, the sidewalk, I don't think is going to make it. It's going to get negotiated out. I don't want to see that happen. The sidewalks on the plan, this is the plan you want, do it. But water, septic, traffic. Need a different buffer than what I see here. But thank you. Fun stuff, it's great.
So I've, just so you know that I've heard you, I've written down the buffer, the water, the septic, traffic increase, the sidewalks, and speed on the road. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? The woman behind you had her hand up first. Will you please state your name and your address when you come to the podium show?
My name is Geraldine Hubbard, and I live on Ivy Lane in Barrington, and I am for the project. And the reason I'm going to tell you why I'm for the project is it has a lot to offer. Our healthcare is changing, and whereas the clientele is changing, and our 55-year-old community being in here doesn't mean that the 55 will be in all of it, because you've got independent and assisted living. Independent, they have to meet, which by the state is called a RAT, sorry, it's called a RAT, but it's a resident assessment tool, and that lets you know where they're qualified to be, whether they're qualified to be an independent or assisted living. It's a quality of life. It's where they can continue to grow and be, and be in their own community, and be able to give back into the community, and financially also. Help a project that is a wonderful project. And I've been in the healthcare for a long time. Parents are getting older. And it also is an opportunity for a respite program, where a lot of people have their families still home, and they love their family very much, they want to get away. What a great opportunity to bring somebody in here for respite and be able to stay, and have the care that they need, and be able to go on, have a wonderful vacation, and not worry about their loved ones. I see a lot day in, day out. Like I said, I've been into healthcare for many years, and the clientele is changing. We're not seeing the 80 and 90-year-olds anymore. We're seeing the 50 and 60-year-olds. So this kind of a project will keep them in where they still can be involved in things. They're going to be paying a certain price to be there, so the tennis courts and whatever is in here will be included. So the public coming in, doing it, they're paying taxes into the town as these people are paying to stay in here. So there should not be any charge for anybody to come in and do the same thing. Whoever in, in assisted or in independent living, nine times out of 10 wouldn't be 55 years old. They have to be qualified to be in those, in that level of care. And they can continue to grow to be the level of care from the time they start to the time that, yes, they do get into nursing homes. We, in our nursing home, we need more veteran nursing homes. This is an opportunity for people to stay here, and we can take in more veterans in our nursing homes. So I think it's a great project. I know it's got a lot of work to go, and there's a lot to work out of it, but I think it's a great project for the town and brings in us, for our community, to help our community, and that they can stay, because there is a lot of places they're not. They're closing their doors, and we need this. It's a generation that's coming, and we'll all be there someday, unfortunately.
I'm already there.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? Someone right here?
Hear me?
Vanessa, yes.
My name's Brian Dubois. I live 42 Malago Road. My house is right here, in front of one of the proposed entrances. Tell you a little bit about myself. I am a real estate appraiser. I have been since 1989. I am also a broker, and deal in all sorts of properties. The, one problem with this is that you have to address is how will it affect a butter's property's values? This is a conceptual, it can change. So, you can't say that it won't affect value. You won't know until you have an actual plan that's being submitted. So, my point is that you can't say that it's not affecting value, because you don't know what it's going to be. That is a, a strong issue with me. And the road going from 125 to Malago Road is, it's, it's an issue because of what other people have already addressed. The, the comment that Mrs. Lambert had about the well and septic, that is a question for the planning board, but the, the project itself could actually impact her value if she has to put in a new well, or, I don't know about the septic, but it would be more about the, about the well itself, if the well gets contaminated, or if, if it dries up. So, that's, even though that's a question for the planning board, you still have to kind of look at that impact on the values. So again, you don't know until, until you have an actual plan that's, that's before us, to tell what's going to happen with value. A little bit more, I know Dan personally, stand-up guy. And as far as the proposal, I, I kind of agree with everybody else, you know, something, you know, should be done. At what density, you know, I don't know. And then the last thing was, yeah, there was one other thing, but I, I can't think what it is, so.
I've, I've listed your points as the water to the surrounding properties, potential for decrease in home values and traffic.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Would anyone else, please, throw in the back?
Madam Chair, if I may, before he speaks. There are people online that I see that your hands are raised, and there are several people online that would probably like to speak for or against. I do, we do see you. We're going to first hear from the audience here that's present, and then we will go to online. Thank you for your patience.
State your name and address, please.
My name's John Dubey. I live at 82 Malago, just about four or five properties down. Re-echoing what some of the people here say, the traffic. One of the things I heard tonight was that the, probably the first thing that would come up would be the daycare. On that plan, it says 84 children. There's drop-off and pickup right away. Malago Road is already being used as a cut-through road. People don't want to wait at the light. They come, come down from the far end of Malago Road and either cut down tape or come down through. Any increase in the density of traffic in that area is just going to make that, it's going to exacerbate that. One of the other things that came up tonight was that he's going to be looking for somebody to take over the property once it's there, and I would be concerned that whatever variance may be granted here may not stick to the people that are, would take that over, and I don't know whether there's any protection to things like that that would, you know, but that's one of the concerns that I have tonight, as well as, as the, the well. We had concerns last year when the drought was happening, whether, you know, we were going to have enough water in our particular place, and to have this kind of draw on the aquifer in, in this area is a great concern. So those, those things there are, are big. I, I don't have an objection to the thing, and I, and I do understand what they're saying about the density. But, you know, rights of the people that are already here should have a bearing on whether or not something like that is allowed to come in. There's a shortage of these types of, of facilities right now. So if this were to be put up, what, what is to stop all the people from Portsmouth and Dover and surrounding area that right now can't find a place, and having this thing fill up right away, and then the people in Barrington don't have access to it? So, those are my concerns.
Would you like to, I, I assume Jen is your spouse?
Yes.
Would you like to read her letter and to record while you're up there?
Sure.
If I'm comfortable doing so, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be most helpful. We were going to do it, but I'm losing my voice fast, so. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. This is for our zoning board and town planning folks. My name is Jennifer Dubey, that's actually my wife. My husband and John and I have lived at 82 Malago Road for 12 years. We chose Barrington specifically because of its small-town feel and the natural beauty of this immediate area. Our main concern is regarding the proposed Caleb Malago Road project involved a potential significant increase of traffic, as well as the impact such a project will have on the wetlands around us. We have already seen greatly increased traffic from the elementary school. Decision was made several years ago to allow buses only to use the Malago Road gate during drop-off pickup times, but that gate is now accessible all day to anyone and everyone. Malago was already a popular cut-through between Roots 9 and 125, and it's reasonable to concern that adding new facilities, 280 parking spaces adjacent to a busy elementary school could exacerbate access and safety issues on our road. In addition, in our neighborhood, there are currently a limited but appropriate number of private wells, drainage areas, and septic systems, because the physical needs of the proposed facilities have a negative impact on a water table which is currently serving a much smaller population. I estimate roughly 120 toilets and sinks, perhaps 80 to 100 tub shower units greatly increase laundry heat, drainage gate watering, et cetera. Compounding this concern, it seems that concentrated expanse paved areas could affect not only natural drainage options, but the road salt runoff could impact our groundwater and natural wetlands in this area. Town maps will show that there's a natural bog situated between Malago Road and Pine Grove Cemetery. On one of the plans, there's a tiny notation indicating man-made wetlands. This is something I would guess would occur when natural drainage options are eliminated or greatly decreased. If we are already planning for a man-made wetland, then perhaps this deserves a closer look. Drainage issues at the other end of Malago, Malago are well-known and have been ongoing for years. Any wetland study performed in 2022 will likely not provide accurate data due to the unprecedented drought in New Hampshire, in New England last year, indeed throughout the entire Northeast. Even prior to 2022, we are all aware that New Hampshire's water levels have been affected by the ongoing lack of precipitation. When we finally do receive adequate rain and snowfall in the years ahead, exactly where will that water be draining to? We have not had swampy areas on Malago Road, nor would this be desirable, but as noted above, there are longstanding drainage issues. Barrington does have pressing needs for quality childcare, as well as good options for senior living. There has been a huge increase in construction of all types over the last few years. I would be interested to know, say over the past 10 years, how many variances have been requested for each of those years, and how many of them have been granted? Ironically, my, I'll skip that one, when I was in personal. Thank you for your time, and thank you especially for the service to our town.
Thank you. But I put that back, so my records, thank you, sir. Who else would like to speak? Please. State your name and address.
Jim Fordham, 98 Mendham's Landing Road in Barrington. It's getting late. I think this is a very exciting project, and I'm in favor of it, but I also appreciate the investigation that you guys are doing. I'll just leave it at that. I mean, healthcare is a mess these days, and to have, for folks to have an opportunity not to have to spend a day, you know, in, in, you know, in the emergency room, unnecessarily is something that's a wonderful thing. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else physically here that would like to speak? If not, I'm going to move to online, please. I'm sorry. Can I hold you up one second? Go ahead, Ms. Hawkins.
Oh, I just wanted to say something in, in, with regard to everyone worrying about amount of water. I, I believe this must still be true. I was working for the town way back when we had a water bottling company that wanted to come here, and there was extensive research down in our water. And at that time, I was told that the aquifer that runs under 125 is enormous. I would, I would say that, you know, water, I mean sewer naturally would be a concern, but the last thing I would worry about is water availability in that area.
So, repeat.
I have the opportunity to speak.
Your name, please, and your address.
Yes, I have a couple things just to mention. My name is Ben Bradley, and I live at 210 Malago Road, same road that everybody's spoken of. I want to voice support for the plan. My parents are getting older, and I think it would be a good plan for Barrington. Additionally, I work at Wentworth Douglas Hospital, and I can't speak on their behalf. Things that I voice are my own and shouldn't be construed to be attributed to the hospital. But I know the hospital does a community health needs assessment every three years as part of their nonprofit mission. And among the things that may be top of mind, mental health, behavioral health, and other issues, at the very top of the list of those is access to long-term care. This plan is a well-thought-out plan that I think balances the needs in our community with a thoughtful approach for some town space. Additionally, I would say my biggest concern with this process is the zoning board would get caught up in things outside of its responsibility and decline to move this process forward where other issues that I appreciate from neighbors can be sorted out. So I would ask the board to consider this on its merit for your job of reviewing the variances that are being proposed, and allow the planning board and other processes to move forward without objection from this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? Please, come up to the podium.
My name is Melanie Ross, and I live at 27 Malago Road. I think the plan is great. I know we need these services and whatnot, but my biggest problem is the water and the traffic. You say that we have a great aquifer. I tend to disagree when we run out of water, because we run the washing machine too many times in a day. So, and they're building 15 houses out behind us now. That's going to take up more water, and then you build this here, that's going to take a lot more water. We won't have any water at all. It's, it's just not right. It's not fair for us people that live there. I've lived there for 27 years, and we're going to be run out because of overpopulating, overdeveloping. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Can we go to the online hands raised, please?
Um, I have, any of you online that would like to raise their hand or comment, I do see a hand up. I'll unmute you. I think it, um, I think you might have to unmute yourself if you're online, that you have your hand up. Thank you.
Can you, hi, this is Dawn Castle, Red Fox Lane. And, you know, really an advocate for senior housing, spent my career advocating for older Americans and access to equitable healthcare, but share a lot of the concerns of my neighbors. I pass Mr. Caleb almost every day, walking his dog, and understand the challenges of traffic on the road, as well as the issue with sewer and water access. But one of the things that I, I have a question on today that wasn't really clear in all the comments as they were talking about the variance in actual occupancy of what's being proposed is, and if I missed it, my apologies, what is the number of units of this project that's proposed versus the actual licensing that will be requested from the state of New Hampshire for occupancy of these buildings? So I don't know if someone can answer that.
Yeah, can you pa, pause for one second, because I think this speaks directly to the variance of density being requested. So, it sounds to me like the question that's before us, and I would, as a board member, be interested in this. You stated the number of units, but let's talk about the occupancy of each of the two.
Okay. That would be, yes.
All right, you have the paper. Yeah, okay. I'll let it fix it. So we have 32 housing units in the senior housing, and you expect the occupancy number to be?
The 32 units, from my understanding and talking through code enforcement, those are individual apartments. Those apartments could have a maximum of two bedrooms. So, and so, right?
Yeah, and that variance is measured by units, not by bedrooms. So it's kind of, essentially, the kind of juxtaposition of the ordinance itself is.
the nursing facility, if you are assisted living, is measured by bedrooms and the 55 and older is measured by...
So the importance of that is, I think, you won't find a family with three kids or even two kids because the kids, if they're boy and girl, need to have a separate bedroom. So in the case of having people that are connected to the other unit, a spouse, it may be one occupant. But we don't anticipate more than two occupants at the max for apartment.
And I think that...
Two bedroom units.
Two bedroom units. But I think that answered that person's issue and maybe the board's as well. Dan had indicated that even though it might be common practice and other facilities to allow two people per bedroom with respect to the nursing facility is, and it's 62 units.
I thought 64.
No, it's 62. 62 bedrooms looking and agreeing to a restriction with respect to one person per bedroom. So that would be, again, completely inconsistent with, you know, I guess, standard practice.
So the assisted living environment or skilled nursing care environment, the occupancy is 62.
62. And if we had a husband and wife, it comes out of that number.
Okay.
So in other words, we'd have to then have an empty unit that would be utilized for something else.
And the housing with the 32 units would be 64 people potentially in two-bedroom units, but it could be as high as 96?
No.
Well, with two children and then the...
No, because you'd never have all of them occupied by children. In the 55 and older...
Only 20%.
We talked about that.
Okay.
So...
I could ask my question in a different way.
Sure.
So I want to make the distinction between a skilled nursing facility, which is what we know as a nursing home, which has a different level of care, different services provided than an assisted living and the various levels of care that may happen with an assisted living. So within the independent living, it's my understanding those are just regular apartments. So people can rent them. There's no care associated with it. There's no cost of care associated with it. It's like if I just went and rented an apartment. How many units are you proposing for the independent living?
32.
32.
The variance is requesting 32.
And can I speak to that? Just since we're on that page. The allowable number of units for that building could be, depending on what footnote you're in, either seven or eight. So it was interesting, the question that one of the board members asked is, what if those units are filled up right away by either persons that are, you know, healthy, 55 years and older, whatever? If we don't get the variance, the likelihood is that that happens quicker as opposed to later. So we're asking you to make it easier for those 55 and older who are disabled to have a place to even think about. If you grant, if you deny the variance, we're only limited to either seven or eight. Let's say seven.
We understand.
Yeah. And so I think that's an important distinction as well to make.
Yep. No, I understand. And then with the assisted living units, how many units are you proposing? And how many licensed beds are you proposing within those units?
62 units and 62 licensed beds.
But what's the probability of you having 62 units that can have two people, that you're going to expand that licensure to double that occupancy?
We're limiting our request in front of this board to that level. So that's what's...
So should the variance be granted? It would be with the caveat that those 62 units would only allow for single occupancy.
Correct.
Yeah, you're granting for 62 beds.
62 beds.
Right, you're granting for 62 beds.
Yeah. Any other questions, Dawn?
Yes, one other one. And I don't know if this is the right form, so please, if it's not. I'm curious, Dr. Hopkins, you know, I know owns Watkins and Bellamy. What is the average rent? And if you can share that? Because I'm trying to understand access versus equity and serving a fairing to residents.
I will just share with you that that's not valid to the request for the variance. So I would be uncomfortable. We're talking about a density issue and you're talking about a profitability issue. And I would be uncomfortable even entertaining that, Dawn.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
There is another individual online, Answin Castles. I can't unmute you. You have your hand raised, so it's...
You have the SC that's got their hand raised?
Yeah, okay.
Is someone on screen with the initials SC? And I apologize that I sound like I'm losing my voice. If you could, if you'd like to speak... Are you there?
That was... Yes, that was me.
Before you speak for the...
That was your...
Oh, that was her.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So for the respect of everyone else here in the room and online, I think that we have a very good picture of the support and certainly the concerns in reference to the density variance. If there's another factoid, fact, issue, statistic, something that you'd like to bring forward, please do. If not, I would like to speed things along and potentially... Go ahead, please.
There was one last thing quickly from my perspective that I'm concerned about, and that is...
State your name and address.
Ben Bradley, 210 Malago Road. I had spoken before. The one other thing that I just want this board to consider is this plan is coming before you because it's required to asking for a variance. And I think it was alluded to in what the presenters had talked about, which is if this isn't granted, it's likely not going to happen because it's not feasible. I think that's an important point. However, the other point is you've got 13 viable acres that a plan could be put forth that maybe isn't as advantageous to the community needs that are outlined, you know, in various community needs assessments. So, you know, you could end up with a Kohl's or a gas station or, you know, whatever else outside of this. And, you know, I think the presenter is genuine and is interested in meeting the needs of the community. But my concern is you oppose this. You prevent the planning board from addressing some of those other concerns. And, you know, a developer could come in and do something within the guidelines that exist in town center zoning. And so that's why I think I'm so passionate about this project is I think you've actually heard from a number of people that the concept is they like. And I'd hate for it to move in the wrong direction just because they couldn't get through a variance request. So thanks so much.
Thank you for sharing that. So I stated that in the terms of the unknown of what else could occur on the property. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, we have a book of instructions that we're required to follow. Who gave us those? The voters of this town gave them to us for us to follow. And there are leeways in it to allow us to have some exceptions to the way it's written. Mostly, it's voters like yourself that have put this forward and said, this is what we want. This is what we don't want. That's the guidelines, maybe, that we just have to go by. And I know it's a system.
I think I would just... Our zoning administrator has pointed out, and I just wanted to read this, but maximum density for New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, some surface disposal regulations, or no more than one bedroom for 10,000 square feet of upland soil, or the most restrictive requirement falls in place. In other words, there are requirements for the septic systems that will go before these properties to ensure that whatever is placed there is appropriate.
It might be the density would be less than what was granted if that's what DES law...
And that was one of the final points I wanted to make as well is that when we go through the process of the planning board, and we have looked at water tables and we have looked at drainage and as always, talk about wetlands and salt and all that. All of that is self-contained on any site. And this is 13 acres. So there's going to be a lot of possibilities in terms of 21st century treatment of that that doesn't exist in a lot of projects that are older. This will be state-of-the-art designing and the planning board will make sure that happens. But what was just pointed out is also important. If there are restrictions that are imposed by you, the planning board and/or the state with respect to limits, then irrespective of what you grant, we're going to still have to abide by those rules as well. And we fully expect that. And we just hope that we can provide as much as we can in terms of what we are trying to propose for the community. Thank you.
Before we entertain any motion, a variance is a waiver or a relaxation of particular requirements of an ordinance, and in this case, the zoning ordinance, when strict enforcement would cause undue hardship because the circumstance is unique to the property. So I would like you to keep in mind we've been presented with what are, in fact, four aspects of a variance and all of them involve density or usage of the property. We've been presented with facts, both from the public and from the applicant in this particular case. And our job as a quasi-judicial board is to entertain non-opinion and facts that have been presented to us. So based on that, do I have a motion from any of the board members one way or the other regarding the variance?
I'd like to close public comment.
Oh, certainly. At this time, we'll close public comment. I'm sorry.
That's the same thing.
Yeah, sorry. At 9:46?
Yes.
Thank you. Do I have a motion by any of our board?
Oh, wait. I think, Paul, I think you're... I heard you say, I want to make a motion, but...
I did. Did you hear me? Can you hear me?
There we go.
Go ahead, Mr. Tipperam.
All right. I like, I love the concept of this whole plan. The daycare, the 55 and older, the older community being served. But the density for this 13-acre parcel is too much, in my opinion. It's just too many... It's a huge ask. I mean, you're asking for 25 additional units. And the additional beds that you're asking for, four times the density. It's just too much of an ask for this 13-acre parcel. And I have to agree with a lot of the comments about the congestion on the road, Malgo in particular, and coming out onto Route 9 and taking, trying to take a right on Route 9 from Malgo in the first place. Now you add all of these, the daycare folks dropping their kids off and the traffic from this facility going in and out. My God, I don't see how you're going to... And I know that's the planning board's job. But again, if we allow the variance tonight, then the planning board has to deal with that. So before then, we'll be, okay, how are we going to get there? They've been approved to have this. This density's been approved by the ZBA. How are they going to get there? So you're going to have to come up with the plans to go in and out of this facility with a flow of traffic that is not going to totally change the whole character of 125, Route 9, Malgo Road. It's already getting congested in there in the morning. It's doable as it is. But I think with this many units and the units that are proposed across the street and the units that just went down on Route 9, there's like 50 of them there or something. I think the density is too much of an ask. If it was smaller, I could support it. I love the idea. I really do. I just think there's too much.
So do you have a motion, Mr. Tipperam?
I have a motion that we deny the application as proposed.
Do I have a first or a second?
You can't make a negative. You're not making a negative motion.
So if you are to decline the variance, you need to state your reasons for declining the variance.
Or if you get a motion. Right now, if we don't get a motion, it does not pass. Because we cannot, we cannot have a negative.
I'm pretty sure that legal said that we need to actually decline and give reasons.
And you have to give a reason. You have to give a reason. Okay.
So a motion to decline, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So at this time, be ready if we take a vote.
I think you should state the reason before you vote because you've got to give a reason. My reasons are, when the hardship, hardship density and because of the dollar value of not making enough money the way that I feel that is written, I think that is part of it. And also, the other one there is public interest. I think the public interest, and it's going to change the way that section of the world is, or that section of the way Barry is. That's the reason why I turned it down.
An interaction in... You have to state your reasons, Paul, for declining the...
As long as one person states it, it's not an emotion.
It's denying it due to the... You know, you said one.
That's...
But you have to say why by one of the five criteria.
Yeah.
I think George just did it for me.
So you have the same reasons for declining. Okay. Roll call.
Are you still waiting for me to do that?
Well, I was waiting to see if you had another issue.
I have an issue with the density. I have an issue with the traffic.
So a reason based on the qualifications might be that the land is able to be utilized in another capacity so that it does not meet the requirement of a hardship.
You've got to base it on the five criteria, Paul.
You have to base it on the criteria that was brought before you.
All right, good grief. George, have at it.
Well, I did. And I've made those comments there. And I really feel that it's... I've made my thing. Hardship and public comment with it for the...
Public.
Interest. You know, it's going to change. And I am doing a dance here for one reason. It's right here. Granting the variance would be contrary to public interest. Period. That's the sense. Because I can't use a negative. That's what the Supreme Court changed.
Very difficult.
Makes it difficult all these years.
And the other one?
He was stating the...
The number five.
The water supply issue, I think. And there's a hardship for the neighbors.
Hardship because they reached the hardship saying...
So I have a first and I have a second for declining the variance. Could I have a roll call vote, please? Paul, I'll start with you because you're online.
Aye.
Aye.
I hate to say nay because I love this project, but I can't see hardship there, so I have to say nay.
So I just want to be clear. Andre voted nay, which means that he is for the project. Andre voted nay, which means that he is for the project. If you vote for the project, then you are a nay. If you are voting against the project based on the motion, so which are you choosing?
I have to go hide in this. I just don't see a hardship. Aside from that, I love this project.
Yeah.
Aye.
So to be very upfront and honest, my reason for voting aye is that the land can be utilized in other capacity. We all love this project. The density you're requesting is a little over the top. The land could be utilized in other ways, which means that the hardship for you that you've proposed does not actually exist, which ties our hands to approving this much of a density. So I also vote aye.
So that's quarter one, and you denied the variance.
That is correct.
I just take exception to what you said, is that's the old standards in terms of reasonable use, but I understand what your vote is.
I think we quite honestly made clear that if the numbers were not quite as high as what has been presented to us, we would all...
I completely understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that's a governor's island rationale that you're using, which I would object to. But other than that, I understand the vote. I appreciate your time.
It was wonderful.
A pleasure being here, gentlemen. Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks.
Do I have a motion to adjourn at 9:56?
Then post the adjournment.
Yes, because I'm stuck. This is on the...